Good evening. Welcome to Oak County County Board of Commissioners Meeting. This is our second public hearing on the FY23 budget. Today is Tuesday, June the 7th, 2022. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. With that, we'll invite Melissa up to give us a recap of the budget.
Thank you Chairman. Good evening Board. I am here to discuss the FY23 proposed budget as it was proposed to you during our first public hearing, May 24th, and to report to you that there have not been any changes since that date. We are currently still at a proposed general fund budget of $37,894,885 with a total budget of $65,880,198. I've adopted this budget would go into effect on July 1st, 2022 and carry us through June 30th, 2023. So I would respectfully request that the board consider a resolution to adopt the proposed FY23 budget and the proposed fee schedule. In addition to the budget adoption, we had two additional items for consideration at the first public hearing. First was the committed fund balance of $912,912, and I would like to request that you consider uncommitting that committed fund balance. And second, consideration of the multi-year project listing for approval of any necessary budget amendments through the life of the projects not to exceed the approved contracts amount. And so if I can provide any more information or answer any questions at this time, I'm happy to do that as well.
Very good. That's one of my couple of comments again, since we got a big crowd out here for us though. Some of the highlights of the budget. So as far as budgets go, to me, it's been one of our most exciting budget seasons because we're able to accomplish a lot of goals that we've had for a long time. First for our employees, we have a $3,500 increase for entry level across all grades, and that will be compounded for years of service on each step. So the least amount, and the least amount of a raise an employee will get will be 3,500 for full-time. We also adjusted regular part-time hourly rates for increase as well. In addition, on our public safety matrix, grade 10 and above, which is basically our road deputies in command above that, receive an additional 2%. And we also continue funding our senior deputy post certifications, which where a deputy can take certain coursework and get additional certification post that increases his salary up to 10% based on where he's sitting now. In addition, a 10% across the board increase for health insurance and for our wellness program participants, we will cover 100% of that increase and also continue funding 1,200 per employee for those that are in the HSA program. And then for our taxpayers, military rate reduction so that we only recognize the real growth in the, in the digest. So there will be no tax, increased hearings will be required in Oak County County for this year. Again, thanks to the board commissioners for the commitment of having the right number of people doing the right things, commitment to the comp plan and our strategic plan. So with that, we'll open up to any questions you might have for Melissa. All right. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll open up to any public comments that might be for the budget for FY23. Anyone virtually? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments at this time. And so what we're looking for here is a motion to adopt the FY23 budget as presented for the general fund, the amount of $38,894,885 with a total budget including the general fund of $65,880,198 for the, and the FY23 fee schedule. In addition to uncommitting the fund balance in the amount of $912,912,912. And to approve the budget amendments necessary for multi-year projects as presented. Okay, we have motion second. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
What, what area will we adopt the military?
It'll be probably around August, September, I think is the timeframe. Yep. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, with that, we'll move right into our regular board commissioners meeting. Again, if you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, you use the raise hand feature in Zoom. So after a moment of silence, we're going to ask Justin to lead us in the pleasure to the flag. Please stand. Thank you. Our first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
I'm making motion to approve the agenda. Is submitted.
Motion second, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda tonight. Anyone virtually? Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners? A couple announcements for June 14th is going to be a busy day for meetings in Oak County County. First, the Oak County County Water Resources Department will hold a public meeting on the proposed expansion of the Cause Creek Water Reclamation Facility. This will be on June 14th at the community room at the Oak County Veterans Park, and this will be from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. In addition, that evening at 6:00 PM, we'll have our quarterly town hall meeting, and this meeting will take place at the Civic Center and also virtually. Program will begin at 6:00 PM, and it'll also include a kickoff for our comp plan update that'll be starting that night. Next item is to approve the minutes. This is from our regular meeting on May 3rd, agenda setting meeting on May 24th.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about maybe a potential correction on our May 3rd meeting under the rezon request for Penn Pacific. Commissioner from Post 4 got to vote twice. Voted for and against. So I don't know how you did that. Yeah, okay.
I actually had to do that in the meeting one time. I got vote for the, vote against it twice. Any other corrections? With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Okay, we have motion second. All in favor? Thank you. Next item is update on Cole Springs Road. Justin, are we going to, Jody?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On Cole Springs Road at your direction, we did reach out to three engineering firms and get prices for our ice studies. And we also reached out to District 1 and spoke with Sue Ann Decker, the, the district pre-construction engineer. She said her team was working on some things. They were pulling some data and doing a couple of concepts and so you know, we're here to direction. If you want to move with the ice study or if you want us to reach out and sit down with GDOT and discuss it a little further, we'll, we'll do as, as you direct.
And just a reminder from the options GDOT presented to us is keep it closed for whatever duration, open it as-is or move toward either a short form or long-term solution. But if there's an opening, it's an as-is scenario right now. So.
Didn't GDOT make any comment about going ahead with the ice study before they
Sue Ann's recommendation was to hold off and not spend the money just yet and just sit down with them once they get all their data together.
Did she give any kind of timeline for that?
She was anticipating a couple of weeks, so she should have something within the next week or so that we can sit down and see what they have.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, so restate that if you don't mind, Jody. What, what you're saying is the DOT has some ideas?
Yes, sir. They were pulling crash data and traffic data, any of the information that they could put their hands on real easy, and they would sit down and do just a quick analysis. It wouldn't be a full intersection control evaluation, but they'd do it from like a 30,000-foot view and see kind of where the numbers looked like they were leaning. And that's, that was the direction or the recommendation that the DOT had was let them get their information together before we, you know, spend the money. If it's something that we can partner with them and save some money, they're, they're all in favor of doing that too.
Well, that's fine to do that. I mean, before we retain a consultant, but I want to make sure that stays, you know, when you wake up in the morning, I want it to be the first thing on your mind. Okay, go this on mine every morning. And so I appreciate the effort, but I think we had said as a commission that we did not want to consider any permanent closure, but we wanted a solution. And so if, if we can give GDOT a couple of weeks, that would be great. Now, if they said two months, that'd be a different story. But two weeks, if they can get back to us within that time so that you can report back to our June, excuse me, our June I, I don't think that would hurt to wait that short period of time.
Okay. Everybody are in that direction. Okay, thank you. All right, so our next item is a second reading, public hearing in consideration for the proposed updates to the no-through truck ordinance. This is an item of report from that there's no action being taken by the board. So there'll be no comment. Again, we'll have a June 14th town hall meeting. If you'd like to come again and address us there, that'd be, be great. So no-through truck ordinance was first adopted in Oak County in 1982. Updates of the ordinance occurred several times, with one of the most recent updates occurring in 2005. So over the years, it appears roadways were signed for no-through trucks that were not added correctly to the road listing for the ordinance. In addition, there's some historical judicial rulings created that created enforcement concerns for the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office, as well as the county offices, experienced an increase in complaints related to truck traffic along county roads in the last 12 to 18 months. Some of that is related to some additional sand, sand plants and aggregate plants that are in adjoining counties. In response to the concerns raised by our citizens, the sheriff's office and county administration decided to work together, provide an accurate and enforceable truck ordinance. County staff reviewed the 2005 ordinance, making minor updates in language. In addition, the staff verified all roads that were currently posted for no-through trucks whether they were on the list or not. Staff will also recheck to verify the road, all roads are correctly posted for no-through truck ordinance according to the manual on uniform traffic control devices after this ordinance passes. So based on that review of the 2005 ordinance, as well as the work of our county staff going around, looking at each road that was posted, here, here's the list of roads that are the historical listing for roads that are designated as no-through truck either by sign posting or correct ordinance. Aiken Road, Antioch Church Road, Assendale Road, Acot Road, Barber Creek Road, Branch Road, Burr Harris Road, Carson Graves Road, Joyce Johnson Road, Cliff Dawson Road, Lotfelter Road, Cole Springs Road, Column Ferry Road, Cooper Gen Road, Daniels Bridge Road, Dowell Mill Road, Elder Mill Road, Elder Road, Freeman Creek Road, Garrett Road, Gober Road, Government Station Road, Even Church Road, Hodges Mill Road, Jennings Mill Road, Jimmy Daniel Road, Jones Road, Julian Drive, Kirkland Road, Lane Creek Road, Malcolm Bridge Road, Mars Hill Road, Marshall Store Road, Matthews Road, Main Mill, McNuts Creek, Crease Gen, Moreland Heights, New High Shoals Road, Oliver Bridge Road, Parker Creek Road, Pete Dickens Road, Price Mill, Ray's Church, Rocky Branch, all sections, Salem Road, Sykes Road, Simonton Bridge Road, Snow's Mill Road, Steel Road, Tapping Spur, Union Church, Whopper Wheel, and Wire Bridge Road. So on March 15th, I met with county staff, the sheriff, sheriff's office representative, clerk of court, reviewed the updated draft ordinance that was created by our staff. We had concerns raised on the enforcement on roads coming from a neighboring county that was not also a no-through truck road. The roads in question were removed from the list for the draft that was posted to the website for public review and comment for our first public hearing. Once that list was posted, we received comments from our citizens about the roadways that were being taken off the list. Based on those comments, the sheriff and I had additional conversation about these roadways. The sheriff's office, the sheriff and advised he'll enforce the ordinances for the roads included by the board of commissioners. But we need to note that the sheriff's office nor the governor authority influenced the decision of the judicial branch. So the board of commissioners agrees to make adjustments to the ordinance based on case law provided by the judicial branch going forward. So if we have a road on here that our judicial branch is saying cannot be, that will not be enforced on the judicial side, that road will come off in the future. So at our first reading of the ordinance on May 24th, the consensus of the board of commissioners was to maintain the historical no-through truck roads. So that means every road that I read out is on the list for consideration as it stands right now. The current board commissioners nor sheriff's office has added to or taken away from the originally listed or proposed, posted roadways at this time. We did have additional conversation on May 24th. Open discussion on the status of two roadways, one being Assendale Road and the other being the four lane section of Mars Hill Road. As of right now, all those roads remain on the list. It was a discussion item. We asked staff to send out to get public comment on the removal of those two, which we have, have received. So the only thing we're really discussing tonight going forward is the status of those two roads and kind of the will of the commission to move forward with those. So the first one was, was Mars Hill Road that was mentioned, the four-lane section from basically Oak County Connector back to Butler's Crossing. And I did mention something about the overlay district in, in the comp plan. I don't know if I said it exactly right when I mentioned it, but the the overlay district is designed for the protection of the existing neighborhoods within the Mars Hill corridor along that four-lane area. And the majority of the four-lane area is designated as suburban neighborhood in our comp plan. So with that, we'll just kind of open it up for any further discussion among the group here about how you want to perceive with Mars Hill's four-lane section.
Well, Mr. Chairman, since I was the one that suggested that as a conversation, I certainly wasn't, I thought, since we had a four-lane highway that if to keep truck, through truck traffic off of our county two-lane roads, that that would be a logical place for them to do that. As you had brought to my attention, that overlay that you mentioned, of course, occurred, I guess, almost 10 years ago. So it certainly wasn't on top of my mind about the overlay. And I'm all for, you know, protecting our neighborhoods. And in light of that, if we have some additional conversations about the verbiage of the ordinance, I'm fine to leave, I mean, I, I, I'm fine with leaving the Mars Hill Road on the list to prohibit through truck traffic. But I reserve the right to let's have some conversation about the verbiage in the ordinance to make sure that I understand what the ordinance is saying about truck traffic. So that's, that's where I'm at on that. So I don't know if this is the appropriate time to have that conversation or
Absolutely.
Okay. The question I, my concern is, is you know, I could, my concern is for the taxpayers and the residents and the businesses that are located within Oak County County. We have some companies that pay taxes that are based here that run a fleet. And my concern was, you know, are we going to impede their ability to do their business by specifically Mars Hill Road, the four-lane. I, I certainly understand that they don't need to be on, you know, a two-lane highway. So my question would be to you, Mr. Chairman, or, or staff at the actual verbiage of the ordinance, item number three, if you want to, unless you know it by heart. Justin, okay. My question is, is like, I'm glad that our county attorney decided to go on vacation, Mike. Sorry about that. He can pick and choose. We'll, we'll have to talk to Councilor Haygood when he gets back from wherever he's at. And, and like anything else, you get a room full of folks in there, they're gonna have different opinions about what something says, and that's true, isn't it? It's true, it, you know, there's, everybody has an opinion about what something says. Yeah. Well, the way I read it was that it was unlawful for any truck to travel certain county roads listed unless the vehicle trip originated or ends on such road or is made for the purpose of making delivery to a site on such road. And that, that to me tells me that you know, unless they're originating or ending on such road, that they're not allowed to go across county roads. And let me just put it in a more simple term, get away from the legally. Let's use an example. I'm gonna pick on Athens Sea Company because their business here in Oak County County that runs a truck fleet. They want to make a, a delivery from their location on Depot Street here in Watkinsville to Jerusalem Road. My question is, would they be able to go on any county road even though it may be on the no-through truck list?
I mean, I don't think they would just go around and drive on every posted road to get to Jerusalem Road, but if their direct path takes them on, on posted road, my interpretation would be that is legal under the ordinance.
So, so because Jerusalem Road is, there are really only two ways I think you can get to Jerusalem Road. Is that correct? And y'all, Column Ferry. I'm not trying to trick you up. I mean,
Watson Springs.
Watson Springs. But to, to get to there, they have to go to one of those county roads that's going to be on the list. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not prohibiting Athens Sea from making delivery to Jerusalem Road?
No.
Okay. All right. Now, here's the next question scenario. What if Athens Sea wants to make a delivery to, to the, to let's say the Good Hope? You know, and so if they have to go and say they find that going on a county road that's on this list, would they be prohibited?
Yes.
So if they're going outside the county, they have to, they can't go on any county road that's on this list.
Right. If they're, if they're just traveling through, trying to find the shortest route, and the road is posted, my interpretation would be that would not be allowed.
How would we know either way?
Well, on the stop, you'd, they would have, supposed to have bill of lanes and stuff like that to determine. Again, I, I don't know if we're overthinking this a little bit. This, this ordinance has been in place pretty much the same, other than the, the list of roads and some definitions here since 1982. So, and it, and I'm, I forgot to ask the sheriff up to verify some of the comments I made and get his opinion. So we'll bring him up in just a second here, but I'd I don't think, I don't think he's got the staff to go around and stop every single truck trailer moving either. But, but our goal is, like I said, we've received enormous additional complaints on trucks that are clearly passing through the county to get to another direction. So Sheriff, would you just first of all, the, the historical statements I made, I just want to make sure those are correct as far as where you stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So the historical side of this is an enforcement side of things. All right. Just like the chairman said, this ordinance has been in place, or at least the three different versions of this ordinance have been in place since 1989. We were able to find two versions of it. The first version had five roads that were no-through truck roads. The second version had probably about 10 or 15 roads that were on there as no-through truck roads. The problem on the enforcement side of it was three things. The signage, the, the road itself, and then how, and then the judiciary side of things. When we tried to, and I'll take you back a step a little bit. I can't remember what year it was. Judge Norris was last, the magistrate judge here in the county, but it was before the four-lane of Mars Hill Road, coming off of 316 on the Mars Hill towards Butler's Crossing. There was no signage there to tell somebody that Mars Hill Road was a no-through truck route. So we had David Gilstrap at the time, who was our head traffic guy, and he started writing trucks citations for coming down Mars Hill Road because it was a no-through, it was signed as a no-through truck route. Judge Norris started throwing those citations out due to the fact that the signage was in the wrong place and couldn't be fixed. DOT was not willing to work with us to make that work, so therefore we were unable to get anything. It was beating our head against the wall as far as writing citations for the no-through truck ordinance. So when I got into office last year, we started looking at this no-through truck ordinance because first of all, it started out the city of North High Shoals because they've got a road, they've got dump trucks that like to come down Hillsborough Road from 186 to cut across to the north end of the county or go to 78 wherever they're going. So all I did was I came looking for clarification in this ordinance so that I can better help the citizens of Oak County by enforcement. Well, then obviously we started getting more phone calls because of those sand trucks and dump trucks coming through the county. So then the more we looked at it, the more we found that this ordinance was a little bit flawed in the manner in which it was written and the manner in which it was, there were signage on roads that were not on the list. We couldn't enforce that because it's not on the list. You look at municide code, which is where everybody goes to look to see what our county ordinance is so that they know how to act when they come to our county. And on municide code, it still had the 1989 version with only about five roads on it. So we started this whole process of trying to find the right answer for this. And, and again, you have other roads in the county that start in another county that are not no-through truck roads. I always use Whitehall and Simonton Bridge as an example. You come out of Whitehall You come out of Whitehall Road for out of Athens, east side of Athens, coming to Watkinsville. Well, you don't notice a no through truck road until you hit the bridge, and if you're in a dump truck or a truck trailer, where are you gonna turn around at? So they're gonna have to come all the way to Main Street before they realize that they're even on a no through truck road. And so the judges were having a hard time citing a man trying to make a living. Of course, he's following GPS nowadays. Everybody follows GPS in order to get where they're going if they don't know where they're at. And that's where where it takes them is that shortest route. Now, whether we can get this ordinance straightened out a little bit to where we can educate some of these people to say, hey, once you come into Oak County, this is no through truck route. It has never been the spirit of trying to keep somebody from being able to make a delivery on a road that's a no through truck road or be able to travel a short distance to get to that location if they have to travel down those no through trucks. I try to hire people that have good common sense. Um and they they do a good job with it, but that's the reason we have not been able to enforce this ordinance up to this point because of the fact that the that the ordinance was was not up to present day standards for the most part. And so everything else that Chairman has has presented so far tonight is exactly what we were asking, was just a clarification of the ordinance itself, clarification of how we're gonna, how we're going to uh, how we're gonna be able to enforce the the current code that we have.
Yeah. So so by its by its nature, this ordinance will limit the movement of trucks through the county. So there there are exceptions for the delivery and everything else, but yes, if you're heading to Good Hope, you can't just take New High Shoals Road just because it's shorter than going down to one eighty-six.
All right. So so your interpretation of the way the ordinance is written, uh so they can go on any county road
To make a delivery.
Even if it even if the road uh even if they had to go across a road that is on a no through truck list.
That's correct. You agree?
I agree.
So if they're going to Jerusalem Road.
Correct.
There there's only a couple ways to get there.
It would be the same thing or very similar to the trucks making a delivery at Bar G on Aston Dell Road coming out of Greensboro. And they would come up Greensboro Road, turn on Aston Dell to deliver them at to Bar G, very similar to it. Um it wouldn't be much different on the on the transverse of that for those dump trucks coming out one eighty-six and turning and going up Union Church Road. They're not supposed to do that because they're coming in from Morgan County, Walton County.
Yeah. I my concern is not for somebody coming from outside the jurisdiction going through to go to another jurisdiction.
Right.
My concern is was within the jurisdiction of Oak County that we don't penalize.
Correct.
Taxpayers that uh that, you know, that business has to be, you know, to make deliveries.
Yes.
Or involve a a truck. I don't know, you know, the ordinance says twenty-six thousand pounds. I I have no earthly idea what kind of truck that is. Uh sometimes I headed to the landfill. I feel like they charged me twenty-six thousand pounds when I land the landfill, so I don't know.
Well, when we when we make a traffic stop, most of the time a truck like that will have it's posted on the door of the truck itself. So I mean, we'll be able to know what the GBWR is of that vehicle. But I mean, generally in common layman's terms, I mean, it's a it's a several actual vehicle. It's not a pickup truck. It's not a, I mean, but it can be a pickup truck and a trailer in combination.
Well, see, that's what my point is. I mean, we have a lot of, uh, I guess you call them landscapers that, uh, I mean, you know, they they're hauling, you know, trailers and and all kinds of.
Yes.
Uh paraphrasing. Uh to go back to Morris Hill, uh Sheriff, I had, that was the one I was concerned about because it is a four lane road. I thought that's what we upgraded before was to accommodate traffic. Uh of course, I I live out that way, so I have a firsthand experience of the traffic out there. And, you know, there's truck traffic out there, but I also realized, uh, after the chairman had brought it to my attention about the overlay, uh I went back and did some research, and that's dangerous for me to do research, but I find out stuff. Uh I found a an old YouTube video of uh Bill Bouchard being interviewed in twenty fifteen. And he was talking about thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on Morris Hill because everybody was wanting to know when it was gonna go back to forty-five.
Right.
Uh but the the question, the thing that he said that did not resonate with me until I heard that was that it was actually state controlled and actually had a state route.
No, correct.
So that's why we have not, and there's no signage of prohibiting through trucks. I didn't see it.
It's up there. They're they're right there at Daniel's Bridge Road, and they're between Daniel's Bridge, or excuse me. Yeah, Daniel's Bridge, Marcell, the connector part back towards three sixteen. There's one right there on the right as you come off three sixteen, not too far off. And then once you get down to the intersection there at the traffic light, there's one there.
But now, going back to the Golden Pantry, I didn't see one going that way.
I I I'm not surprised at that if it's not. It has changed back and forth a few times, yes, and that's the problem is the signage. Signage has to be there for for us to be able to enforce.
Yeah. So I because I was, first thing out before I opened my mouth, I said, I'm gonna go look, and I did not see a no through truck sign leaving Butler's Cross headed toward uh Daniel's Bridge Road. So uh my question is, and I and I suspect now now that we have a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, that we are in complete control of the four lane portion of Marcell.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, I I go back to my point, and I I like I say, I'm fine with leaving the road on the list as a no through truck. Uh but I think it 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 we're gonna have some unintended consequences penalizing our uh business here in Oak County, Oak County that uh use trucks for their business. So that's my only reservations. And like any ordinance, Mr. Chairman, it's true that we can come back and change it at any time.
Yes, sir. We have to, all we have to do is advertise for any changes, and we'll go back through this process again. We can add or remove roads through resolution, which will not require as long advertisement. We'll still have open meetings and public comment on it, but say we get everything posted, and once the ordinance is approved, they go out, Marcell is correctly posted, sheriff's office issues a few citations, we find out that the magistrate court is not impressed with that and starts throwing them out, then we can come back and take the road off, remove the signage, and we keep on rolling.
Well, I I know the price of fuel for all of us has gone up exponentially, and it I can't even keep up with it. Uh when I go to buy gas, it seems like it always jumps up thirty cents right before I go, so I I feel, you know, for for the people whose business depends on, you know, uh buying diesel fuel, I would assume it's real expensive, so.
Five what fifty? Five fifty a gallon for diesel.
I just, I use, I'm sorry if I use Athens Seed as an example, but that's the one I come to mind as far as making deliveries. Uh I just don't want to be, um, you know, I want to be fair to everybody about this and have a air a airing of the concerns that I have. And I look forward to hearing some input.
I mean, I I I think there's this ordinance is gonna have some impact on that, just that's kind of what Commissioner Thomas was talking about. On some of these roads, if you can't come from with a load of sand down Salem Road, they're gonna, it's gonna be another, what, seven or eight mile trip to get to your destination, and that will impact the fifteen.
Yeah, but I'm I'm not, uh personally, I'm not concerned about somebody coming out of Green County going to Park County, so.
Well, a lot of people that may be hauling out there may be Oak County residents, so it's.
And delivering in Oak.
Yeah. So there there's.
In Oak County as well.
Well, I I had another great idea, but I I I was gonna have a carve out and give an exception for anybody that paid taxes in Oak County and and had a tag purchased in Oak County, but.
Well, actually, we we asked that question, and uh, Mr. Attorney, you you want to share that with?
That's an interesting one. Uh I I don't know the answer. Uh a couple of thoughts that come to mind is whether it could violate uh the Georgia State Constitution, equal protection, or the federal constitution, uh Commerce Clause. I mean, there's some thing that there's some reasons that generally you don't discriminate between citizens of one county and another. But I can't tell you for sure it apply, you know, how it applies in that situation off the top of my head.
But wouldn't you, yes, uh circumstance, if there's somebody calling from the business in in another county, regardless of where they come from, if they're heading to make a delivery in Oak County, wouldn't they be exempt?
Technically, yes, uh based on what road they're on. So I mean, it it if if it's in the ordinance, says it's a no through truck, and they're coming from another county that's got it that is a through truck road, but then it becomes a no through truck in Oak County, it's a little difficult for us to enforce that when they're making a delivery not on that road. But then they're going from that road, let's say, let's use Farmington Road to Salem Road, Farmington Road coming out of Green County into Oak County on Salem Road, but they actually got a delivery on New High Shoals Road. Um they're still gonna, if they come that route, they're still violating the no through truck ordinance. By my interpretation of the ordinance.
So rephrase that, Sheriff, to help me out here. So if the there's somebody coming from the sand pit down in wherever it's at.
Gressonville. Yes.
You're saying if if we put Salem Road on the list, we can't we can't enforce it?
I'm not saying I can't enforce it, but if that truck's making delivery, that's what that's what we're talking about is whether or not Athens Seed can deliver to Jerusalem Road. It's the same thing, just like Mr. Pruitt said, as far as that commerce equality. That dump truck delivering to to High Shoals Road still should have the opportunity to drive down a no through truck road delivering the camp.
But if he was going to Barrow Camp.
Now, if he's going to Barrow County, that ain't our problem. That's different.
Okay.
Yes.
Clear game.
That's right. That's right.
See, my my look at it is, and I don't want to overthink it, to me is because you got deputies out there making the best calls they can.
That's right.
And trying to give people latitude to to make a living. And if there's a truck coming in on a no through, but he's delivering to Mark Thomas's house, to me, he he's he's gotta get to our citizen.
Right.
Our citizen's gonna pay, he could be a driver from Oak County.
Could be. And and he knows they're shortest.
I don't look at that as, to me, I'm I'm not looking at that as a violation now. Going from Green to Barrow.
To Barrow is a violation. Yes.
He's fair done.
Yes, I agree with that. Sure do. And that that was, like I said, that was the spirit of just wanting clarification in the ordinance, so that way y'all know how this works, the lowest common denominators who we're writing these things for. So that person can enforce the the laws of the governing authority. And so that that discretion that that deputy is gonna be making out there, again, I tried my best to hire folks with good common sense, but there there's some outliers. And so every now and then you're gonna have somebody that's gonna come through here that that may very well pull that person over to write up a ticket. Well, then, you know, we 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 work with that, but the thing is, is I mean, I have a hard time writing a man just trying to make a living a ticket. You know, and 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 like I said, he's delivering on New High Shoals Road and his quickest routes to get from Gressonville coming up Salem Road, I understand that that's, I'll enforce that, we'll enforce that. I mean, we'll make it, we'll make it stop. But uh this ordinance has to be written in the right way for me to be able to enforce it, and that's all we were asking for.
Yeah.
Interesting point you made that comes about what what is the uh cost of the violation? I mean, what does it cost the driver?
I I'd never have kept up with that. I don't know.
It's in the ordinance. It's uh, any person violating ordinance can shall be punished by a fine not to exceed one thousand. So it's up to the judge at that point. He can say nothing, he can say fifty dollars, he can say up to a thousand.
Okay, so it's not something that's like an old days where you paid it right on the spot?
No, those days are way gone.
That ain't happened in my lifetime.
I I'm just gonna make, I I think, you know, we can say all we want to, but at the end of the day, it's a deputies on road using common sense.
Yes.
Trying to do the best job they possibly can. And uh, you know, finding a common ground and not having to go to court anymore if you got to. So I I think, I think we got folks to do that, and it I I will say, I don't think this is the only thing you got.
No. No.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of other things that that take. And and there's there's gonna be folks that don't don't always tell you the truth.
That's right.
Out there on the road. But they gotta make a call, you know, and so I I think we can, we can work.
So am I reading the consensus is to leave Marcell on the list for no three trucks at this time? I guess.
Yeah, I I invite my uh interpretation or or study since our last meeting, I I like I say, the overlay uh was not um part of my thought process at the time, but the county made a commitment over ten years ago, almost ten years ago, to preserve that corridor. I I don't wanna go, you know.
I got you.
Be a part of contradicting what a prior board of commissioners had committed to.
Okay, as far as related to Marcell Road, when it comes time to vote on the ordinance, it will be included in the ordinance as a no three truck. So our next item would be Aston Dell Road. Want my few comments?
Sure. And um I'll kind of back up too on Marcell. Uh and I I I won't disagree that, you know, we can leave it as it is, but uh I do feel like that my comments about Aston Dell was exactly what you were talking about. You're gonna have a dump truck that's coming one eighty-six and delivering to the south end of the county. My thought was that that truck should be able to go through Aston Dell Road to get to the south end of the county. It wasn't that, you know, I want to create interstate commerce, you know, or a truck route. You know, like, there's a lot of people that keeps talking about the truck route, how it's gonna get from fifteen to bypass Watkinsville. That that's not the intent here. And so my intent was to make sure that the citizens that live in the south end of the county could be served. And, you know, there's one sitting here that's probably as as far south as you can get that has recently had gravel hauled to his road, and it's a dirt road. So, you know, that's just a part of the maintenance that you've got to do with these dirt roads. You got to haul gravel to it. And so, you know, my point is that I want to make sure that whatever route we take, that you know, they are gonna be allowed to do this, and, you know, with fuel and business expenses as it is right now, I don't want to have any undue burden on any business that's located here in the county because of some ordinance that we create. And so that's my concern, is for the business that's here in the county that we don't create a a problem for them. And so, you know, I guess kind of going back to, you know, this scenario, if if you're coming from one eighty-six and Bishop, you'll be able to turn south and then go to, if you were having a delivery, let's just say to your house, for example. I mean, if you were going to your house, what route do you think the truck should take?
I mean, I the Aston Dell Colton Ferry.
Okay.
First of all, you ain't gonna turn right out of one eighty-six and Bishop, but um or left, but
That's true.
Um but yes, the dump trucks coming up there, I mean, where are they gonna go? There's nowhere else for them to go. And that was the reason for coming back and asking for clarification in the ordinance was because of the fact that I've got, you know, my first slick sleeve deputy, his first traffic stop he ever makes might be on that dump truck. And his judgment call that day might not be what all of us would do, but it's gonna be what he's gonna do, and I'm gonna have to stand by it. And if he's doing it by the letter of what this says, then he's right. So that's where we run into issues on that. So that's that's the reason for asking for the clarification on it, but I think that if the if there is a delivery in that area, that that deputy can be taught the common sense of knowing, hey, there ain't no way of way for them to get there than to go through this road to get there. So I I think that that's, I mean, because technically, I mean, the same scenario, they could go on down to Farmington and turn on Salem Road and come that way to my house. But again, it is not feasible, but I mean, it would be about the same distance. So I mean, I think that that common sense is what we're gonna have to use with that and in order to be able to do what we need to do. So I think that I think it'll work.
So and I don't know if if at some point in the future, we might need to modify this this ordinance. I guess we can just do a trial and see how it works. Um I guess the other point that you made about the sand operation that's in Green County that if, you know, Colton Ferry is basically the ending route or the beginning route for that, you know, the road changes at the at the lake.
Right.
The name of it changes, and then so, you know, at the sand pit, it's really still Colton Ferry Road.
Right.
And so if the truck comes out of there and it's making the delivery into O'Conie, should that truck go to two seventy-eight, go four forty-one and try to go around? Or should that be, that truck be allowed to? Or should that be, that truck be allowed to come up the same Colton Ferry Road?
Therein lies the question of the ordinance. So that's why it's hard for us to enforce it. Because we've got to have clear understanding of what this ordinance is gonna be. Now, I don't make the laws, I just enforce them. So that would be y'all's decision to make the ordinance however you see fit and we'll enforce it however y'all see fit. But those are the questions that come up when it comes to common sense. That I think along with the board and, and my deputies, we're gonna have to figure out a way to work together. To first of all appease our cit- citizenry and at the same time, you know, keep them from doing what they should do versus what they're gonna do.
And to me, that's the same thing you just described.
Yeah.
Coming from one eighty-six. So, so I think knowing intent applies to somewhat to laws all being created. There's nobody sitting in this table that is intending to prohibit the delivery of goods and services. To any citizen of the county within the county. Is that an accurate statement? Does anybody disagree with that, I guess? So that would, that's pretty clear direction that. You're leaving the sand pit coming to O'Conne, you can come there. If you're going to Barrow County. That's a little different story. So I, I think. Again, the language, a little bit of language change is very minor to, to try to get it in line and sheriff looked over, we talked again today. Don't put words in your mouth, but you agree with me that this is stayed in a way that you can enforce it?
Yes, sir. I believe, I believe I can. Now, again, I agree that there probably could be some more fine tuning.
Yes.
To the ordinance itself and the wording of it and, and a little more conversation with, with our judiciary to find out.
And I will say that there's a lot of communication between government authority and the sheriff's office now. And so we, we got it going on, trying to address stuff just like this.
Yeah.
You know, we could've just left it alone and gone on that road, but we're trying to tackle things that. Ain't always easy just trying to get them right. So, uh, and I think we're gonna continue to do that. We'll be watching the cases as they go through magistrate court. Um, and make adjustments as we need to.
I will make one comment, and this is where I was going with Marcell on the previous discussion. Is that, you know, we've got six schools that are on Highway fifty-three. And so, you know, my opinion from a safety standpoint would be better to, to allow the trucks to get. You know, not to go that way, just to go up. Marcell, you only have one school there, you know, to get on three sixteen. So that was my real concern. Or my, my comment to be able to allow the trucks to go through there. So as we move forward, you know, with our evaluation for this, I'd like for you guys to give us some input back into that as well. Because that, that's a big issue for me. I mean, I saw firsthand what happened with a truck on top of a, a kid's car. And, you know, we certainly don't want that hat back.
No, absolutely. I agree.
So any consensus on Astondale Road moving on or off the list? Stay. Okay. All right. So the consensus is Astondale will stay on the no through truck list. So when it comes time to vote, Astondale will be included on the list. Very good. Any other questions on the ordinance itself? Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes.
Go ahead. No, you got it.
Okay. Um, let's look at the, those, if I can find it. Going back to those three items. Uh, we're just talking about the weight. Okay, item number C. Now, using combination and Mr. Attorney, you might have to help us with this too, but maybe. Um. I get it with the, um, the power unit, you know, being twenty-six thousand pounds, but let's say that it, the power unit is not that. But a combination could be over that. And, you know, I think that's what Commissioner Harden was talking about. You're gonna have cases that you can have a power unit. It's less than twenty-six thousand, but you can have the combination that's over twenty-six thousand. So how are we gonna deal with those situations? Cause you guys don't have scales.
Uh, that's right. And that, again, therein lies the reason for the needing the clarification in the ordinance. Um, we don't have scales. Um, we're not gonna pull out scales. Um, this is gonna go on when we talk to somebody. And again. It, you're talking about, you're, you're mixing two things here as far as the residential subdivision side of it or something and the, the, the combination weight to exceed. I mean, I, I don't know. I've been doing this for twenty-four years and I've never seen a tractor trailer pull down Bear Harris Road. Um, I've never seen a tractor trailer pull into Northwest Woods either. So, or, or a truck with a cattle trailer on it. The, you're right, it could exceed twenty-six thousand pounds in combination. But, you know, I, I have seen the truck trailer on Bear Harris Road, but the, you know what I'm saying? It's, it, I mean, it's, it's a common sense kind of thing to where. You, I don't know the answer to the question. And that's, that's, and if I don't know, I guarantee you that deputy don't know either. So that's, that's the reason for the clarification.
Just like he ain't gonna stop, stop a trucker. If he's gotta get somewhere, he gonna go where he's gotta get, whether he gets a ticket or not sometimes.
Right. Some of them, some of them be cheaper to pay the ticket than it would be to pay for gas.
They forget. I mean, Coles Springs is close to Bearcase, but they're still going around it every day. It's choice.
So Sheriff, my last question uh to you, for me, I think will be, so if somebody has a, a complaint about it. They call you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They sure do. They call y'all too.
I just wanna make sure you feel all right to give them your phone number.
Uh, I'll pass yours out as well. Yes, sir. I didn't write the ordinance again. I'll just enforce it as best I can.
So, so I think A, B, and C under the section Mark was talking about comes directly from some motor care safety language. Where they do have scales. I think a power unit having gross vehicle weight, that's stamped on the vehicle as well as on the documentation they provide. Power unit with three axles, that's pretty clear. I mean, we're not gonna have any deputies pulling over. So if you feel comfortable, if you'd rather take C off as an option, that's fine, but.
Again, I just don't want it to be an undue burden for some of our local people.
Well, just, I, I don't think you'll see them pulling people over for that. They'd have to call for some other assistance and typically that's not available. Yeah. So we're good with the ordinance itself? Not very good.
Mr. Chairman, my one comment I wanted to make is Public Works rode the roads. These, um, looking at the signage preliminarily, there's probably a few that need to be updated. They were gonna go back out before this meeting. I said, no, let's wait to see which roads they really need to be riding before they do a finality. But um after adoption, they will take a look just to make sure everything is properly signed one more time.
So if the ordinance is approved when we vote, they'll do the double check and then we'll communicate with the sheriff that everything's posted as it should be and. He can start enforcement there. So. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll up. With that, would I open up to any public comments related to the no through truck ordinance? If any citizens would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Commissioners, thank you. Chuck Williams, O'Watson Springs Road with the address of Watkinsville in South O'Conne, O'Conne County. I appreciate the opportunity I had over the last few days to talk with some of you, not all of you, uh, informally about. Uh, the truck ordinance. I appreciate staff's uh input there as well. Uh, it probably comes as no surprise to you if y'all had a chance to read the public comment forums, which I believe came in that, that the Astondale Road. Removal stirred up quite a, quite a stir in South O'Conne County. And Commissioner Thomas, I understand what you're saying, cause I'm, I'm in one of those situations for either timber to leave my place. Or gravel to come to my place. It's pretty much got to, got to cross or, or traverse. Uh, the length of a, of a no through trucks road. And we all know that, that in real world. That commerce has got to hap- it's, it's got to happen. You can't shut that down. Uh, so I appreciate that. I think what, in, in talking with some of my South O'Conne neighbors and your South O'Conne neighbors. We all know what's happening on Highway fifteen uh with the, with the deepening of the port in Savannah. Uh, and all the improvements that the Port Authority and, and GDOT have been making in Savannah. We're seeing every day, I believe, more and more container freight. That is coming up I sixteen to Trootland County and getting off at Highway fifteen. And heading north and it, and, and it comes through Wrightsville and Sandersville and Sparta and Greensboro and really doesn't hit any real traffic problems until it gets to Watkinsville. And we all know what's going on at certain times of the day with Highway fifteen and, and Watkinsville stacking up to back beyond the, beyond the railroad track. So I think what a lot of our concern was that even though the intent was not to turn Astondale into a truck route. That that could be an unintended consequence. If, if it was opened up to trucks. And truckers, truckers, you've been in the trucking business, Commissioner, uh, truckers know routes and, and, and they know mileage and they know time. And, and both of those are money to the trucking industry. And I clocked it uh from Astondale at fifteen to the Frank Stansel interchange is eight miles. If you go through Astondale and then through Bishop up through there, it's right at five miles. So it's three miles further with five dollar gallon diesel fuel. But again, time is money to a lot of those folks. And I can pretty much guarantee you my last dollar. That if Astondale came off the list, you would have freight traffic taking Astondale. It's particularly at certain times of the day when they thought that that would get them through Watkinsville quicker. Than uh, than going through downtown Watkinsville. So I think that was a concern of a lot of my South O'Conne neighbors. And personally, I'm glad, and I believe I probably speak for some neighbors to see Astondale stay on there. At the time being, certainly if Astondale were to become a truck route, I think it would be incumbent that interchanges be upgraded such at Colton Ferry Road and that type thing. If, if that came to be. Mr. Chairman, I've got a related question that I believe is, is germane since, since we're talking about Astondale and talking about truck traffic. And hopefully this will be a real simple answer. Uh, but I pulled the May Court's two thousand and forty plan and was looking at it. And it was adopted, looks like back in maybe around two thousand and fourteen, give or take. And there's a section on it, Table seventeen, and, and this may be dated, it may not be correct, but it was the most informative information that I could put my hands on. Table seventeen is, is projects to be removed from the two thousand and forty plan. And number two on there is State Route fifteen, US four forty-one connector, O'Conne County. Uh, construct two lane road between State Route fourteen, which I assume is a typo since the heading is fifteen. Construct two lane road between State Route fourteen and US four forty-one. And then it cites the reason that it was removed from the two thousand and forty May Court's plan is that local alternative found. And I don't know if that's dated information. I don't know if back in two thousand and fourteen, if this plan is still applicable. Whether the powers that be of O'Conne at the time thought they had found an alternative plan. My concern in reading that is that with all the discussion we've had about getting truck traffic out of Watkinsville and over to four forty-one. That that project may not be in the current May Court's planning document, if you will. And I don't necessarily expect an answer to that tonight, again, unless it's very short and, and simple, but if it's not, I'd like for us to.
So, so there has been an update since two thousand and fourteen. I think we're on a two thousand and forty-five plan out now. Um, so I'm not sure what happened in the fifteen sixteen timeframe. I will say, uh, Representative Wheatour is Vice Chair Transportation at State House. Uh, we do have a project going on now to look at alternatives for traffic from fifteen over to four forty-one. Inside the May Court's area.
Yeah.
We hope to have some alternatives to look at or some, it's not really, what they're trying to do is feasibility studies about what would work, what wouldn't work as far as. Just thirty thousand foot level. We hope to see something on that by the, the end of the year and possibly have a full project number for a bypass to, to occur. So that is being looked at currently.
Thank you for that and I appreciate that. And I appreciate again the informal conversations I've had with several of you and answering some questions. That one was not intended to be aired out publicly just for the fun of it, but it was just one that I hadn't had a chance to, to cover with you. Thank you very much.
Any other comment? Come on up.
I'm Johnny Richards, Mayor of Bishop. I think a couple of you know me and I know y'all. But uh, I want to thank y'all for what you did tonight. Uh, I came up here with a different reason. And uh. And it, y'all, I'm, I was concerned about Astondale Road. Uh, and the traffic that it would bring off fifteen into uh Bishop. And then it turned right. And, you know, we back got enough. We got traffic through off of four forty-one. And in Bishop, and then we got one eighty-six that comes in there. And it looks like in the next couple of years, we're gonna have, uh, when they tear the bridge down over at High Shoals. They're gonna find, find a different route to get over to four forty-one. Even the Walmart distribution center probably will. And it may be something like Christ Hill Road. So, and uh, I want to thank you for you, what you did. Because Bishop needs some relief. And we're not getting it from DOT. It doesn't look like. So this was just gonna add to it. And I appreciate the knowledge.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Stephanie Ryan. I'm here to play for us. Some of y'all know him. You might be surprised that he only got married, but he did. Um, I can speak personally. I was on horseback. And am frequently on horseback on Colton Ferry Road, Astondale Road and Old Farmington Road. People do not slow down for us when we are on horseback. Luckily, we have horses that don't completely freak out, but they do periodically and we have to be very careful because we could be killed. Um, I haul frequently um up and down on Highway fifteen during daylight and during the evening to go over and hunt over at Bellmead and Thompson. I cannot tell you how many times I have almost been run off the road. With livestock in my trailer at night when I'm driving sixty-five, which is the speed limit. That trucks pass me flying over the speed limit at night. I've almost been run off the road several times. I don't know how y'all are gonna address Highway fifteen. Thank you. I mentioned with the other man, thank you for not taking Astondale Road off. If y'all drive down Astondale and Colton Ferry, all you see is more and more and more residential cut-ins. It is becoming a residential area in the south part of the county. It is not becoming commercial. I don't know about you, but my heart, I grew up in Atlanta. I can't go back to Atlanta. It's so awful. And y'all know what's going on in Atlanta. It's all coming ease. My heart skips a beat every time I go up by Carter Lumber. And see what they have done to three sixteen with that monstrosity. It looks like two eighty-five.
Thank you very much.
Scares me to death. So thank y'all for keeping us on the list. And I didn't hear about Old Farmington. Where is it on the list or not on the list? Which is currently a gravel road.
I don't think we have any dirt roads listed as a no through truck.
Okay, so that can't come up on the ordinance to be put in.
It possibly can. If you'll shoot us an email for any road you won't consider, we'll take a look at it.
We ride on that all the time.
Yeah. No, no thick truck. Horse and buggy only on that road. Yes, sir.
Do you have one thing to say? And I appreciate.
You state your name.
Wendell Faulkner.
Thank you.
Forty-one twenty Colton Ferry Road. Uh, this is the first commission meeting I've been since retired in two thousand and four, and it ain't changed a bit. But at least y'all not going to two o'clock in the morning. Um. Thanks for taking Astondale off. Get away from the traffic and talk about safety for just a second. And that was my main thrust and importance. Astondale is a very rural area with tractors, hay trailers, horse trailers. Combines, hay, hay balers. And a lot of bikers. And eighteen wheelers going fifty-five and sixty on a winding road from fifteen to four forty-one. Is not conducive to safe.
Thank you.
And I know I've talked on a couple of occasions about the bikers. Uh, they, they love gray, dark gray and black. They're very difficult to see as it is without having the eighteen wheelers. They're very difficult to see as it is without having the eighteen-wheelers join in that mix. So, uh, do appreciate all of y'all for taking that off the list. And I hope safety will be some consideration if it ever comes back up.
Thank you, sir. Do everyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments at this time. And, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance as we have proposed with the, the list of roads including Marcell and Astondale.
Second. Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as presented tonight with all roads on the historical list. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think your motion carries. With that, we'll move into our rezon section. Our first item is rezon P twenty-two dash zero zero six four. This is Annette Nelson. It's A G to A R. It's two point zero two acres at twenty-eight, twenty-one Flat Rock Road. Yeah?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is not working. There we go. Uh, rezon P twenty-two zero zero six four, uh, in the eastern part of the county. This is the aerial of the, of the rezon and the proposed portion to be cut out of D zero two zero zero four one eight. Uh, it's currently zoned A G, uh, in rural places. And again, the request is rezoned two point zero two acres, uh, out of the A G, uh, lot and rezoned it to A R for residential use. These, this is the concept plans you have in your packets. Um, and then this is enlargement showing the parcel to be cut out. Uh, these are the architectural images that you have in your packets. And, uh, staff recommends approval with, uh, three standard conditions and planning commission also recommended the same conditions. Thank you.
Abe, you want to come up?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Abe Abou Hamdan. My address, home address is sixteen oh one Robin Hood Road, right here in Northwest Woods. Um, thank you for allowing us to be here before you this evening. You would see the request is in order in terms of what we're trying to do. Ms. Ms. Annette Nelson is here. Well, she has lived in that home on that bigger tract, on the five-acre tract for over sixteen years. So she's enjoyed the scenery. She enjoyed the pastures next door to her and around her on a property. But due to a situation related to marital status, so she's having to get out of the house and, and wanted to stay on the property and continue to enjoy our county in that, that area as well. So she wants to move next door, build a, build a home and live in it. Um, and she wants to do a nice country, uh, style home, as you saw in the renderings. And you could see we have tried to do, uh, a two-acre minimum parcel where it didn't intrude as much to the surrounding area or, uh, the atmosphere that you see in that area. But there are plenty residential, obviously to the north, south, you have residents. If you go down the road just slightly, you will find the rid subdivision. So there, there are numeral, numerous, uh, you know, residential developments in that area that support this request. We are just inside that, uh, character area, but very close again to existing residential districts and development. Uh, we, we have no problems with the conditions. This request comes to you with the full support of the planning commission. We have done complete studies in terms of soils, uh, testing for individual septic system on site. We have actually laid out the system as well to make sure everything is in order. Nothing would be changing from what you see. Uh, she's very anxious to, to continue to be here in Okene County. And she's loved by a lot of her neighbors and they really didn't want her to move. And, uh, there were a couple of them here at the planning commission. I'm not sure if any of them showed up today. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll be glad to answer any questions with that.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for this rezon? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Michael, we're being called about on Flat Rock Road. And, um, you know, the reason I moved out there was for the area, for the, uh, amount of, you know, acreage and everything out there. And, um, seeing, you know, acreage being split down and turned into residential type areas. There are some, like Abe was saying, up the, uh, the road. And, um, most of my neighbors, most of what I've talked to, we'd rather not have that happen. Rather keep it the way it is, less traffic, less houses. I mean, it's the charm of the area. It's the charm of Flat Rock Road. And, um, that's the way I would, uh, like to keep it. So there's a reason why there's zoning out there. And, um, again, that's why, that's why I bought out there. It's why I'm out there. It turned into, you know, a lot of these being split up and, uh, turned into smaller acreages. Um, you know, wouldn't be the same. So, uh, yeah, it's my viewpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the zoning hearing and open it up to any questions from commissioners.
Don't really have a question about the, yeah, I just curious, I mean, so the, the go back was like, the road, the driveway itself, I noticed they didn't call it the road. The land, is that just to get to the two acres?
Yes, and remain five on the other.
So part of the driveway is gonna belong to.
It'll be in Eastman.
It'd be in Eastman. I don't know whether it can come all the way out. Okay, I'm good. I'm good.
Guy, can you, while you're standing up? Do we have a map of showing what's around?
We do. Um, let's see if we can get. I think that's, uh, as far out as we went. These. Yeah, that, that was all. Sorry.
Any other questions? Any other questions from commissioners on anything? We'll entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve rezon P twenty-two zero zero six four, Annette Nelson. A G to A R plus or minus two point zero two acres, twenty-eight, twenty-one Flat Rock Road with the three conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve rezon request P twenty-two dash zero zero six four, three conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think your motion carries. Next item is consider appointments to Okene County Amber Services Advisory Board for three two-year terms beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to, uh, nominate Teresa Ruffin and Shannon Martin for the two positions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Now, next item is to consider appointments to Okene Families and Children's Services Board. This is a five-year term beginning, beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two and expiring June thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven. Also a two-year term beginning immediately to expire on June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. And a one-year term beginning immediately to expire on June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. So it's three appointments here.
I'll make a motion to appoint Latonya Clark, Chris Wining, Lee Martin, as stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is consider appointments to the Okene County Tourism and Visitors Bureau for three two-year terms began, beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sarah T. Camuzzi, Candace Miller, and Dean Bright for those appointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is consider, uh, appointments for the Keep Okene County Beautiful Commission for two, two-year terms beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. And also one or two one-year terms again, beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two and expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three.
Make a motion to appoint Darius Johnson, Lana Panther, Brittany. And that name. Sweet. And then, uh, last one is, uh, Cheek, Emily and Cheek.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Let's see. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? And with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent items as presented. Second.
We have a motion, second, approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. There is no need of an executive session, so Commissioner Sykes.
Motion adjourned.
We are adjourned.